Would a couple of corona correspondents on the forum, if they're not here?
In the line.
So wait. Good evening and welcome to the full Barnsley Town Council meeting. Um, yeah, I'll just now warm up with apologies for absence.
Emma Westman, Thorpe and Ken Hartley, Jamie.
Uh, any declarations of interest? Okay, so we'll do that now then. So we have an emergency item that needs to discuss right quickly, just a mobile phone for Joanne. Required business mobile phone, uh, on contract so that she can conduct business, business hours count.
I'll move that.
By the, by the law for, okay. Council of it.
All those in there.
Oh yeah. Apologies, I'm exhausted.
Our chair is very tired, just sort of twelve hours in.
Exhausted today. If I make mistakes, please correct me, apologies. Item number three, um, open forum, um, we've no individuals received, no questions as yet. There's nobody in the, um. I'm all good, stop doing that. Yeah. So item number four, minutes of the last meeting that are attached, um, generally approved minutes of last meeting.
Move then.
Thank you, a second, count, thank you, all was paid here. Thank you very much. Item number five, committee and work groups, uh, we'll jump straight to the general purposes then.
Uh, thank you Chairman, there's, um, two issues to pick up on this. Um, first of all, on the front page, um, I minute twenty one twenty five, there is a recommendation to, uh, this meeting, uh, to agree the purchase of male, male Yews, not male, not Yew, not cheap, Y E W S, burryless Yews.
Oh yes.
Um, uh, so, uh, we need to agree that as a, as a full council to formalise the position. And then, well, once you've dealt with that, I'll pick up the second issue, Chairman.
Yeah, okay, so the, um, flower bed on the square, the original plant was to put some Yews in, there was question around the berries and such like. It's now going to be male plant with no berries coming. Thank you very much.
We accept the recommendations to GP.
Thank you very much, have a second, I'm restricted, all's in favour of that, um.
The, the second item Chairman is the events programme, and I think this breaks down into two sections and, uh, introduces a, uh, further element. So, the first thing is, the, the, um, events that we've been running have put the council as a whole and Jo in particular under considerable pressure, um, and it's unsustainable to carry on at that rate. And, um, the, we, we had an informal meeting to discuss the problems and, uh, uh, one of the suggestions is that we cut back on the, the programme that, um, we discussed on the
Inform.
ninth, no ninth of February, the, the GP meeting. Um, so, I think there's, there's three bits to this, so if I do them in bits. Um, the first one was to suggest that we, um, due to, uh, overcommitment, that we cancel the St George's Day event that we were planning for the twenty third of April. Now, the reason why I say we should do this in bits is that, um, since the meeting, since informal discussions, there has been an approach and an offer, um, which councillor Tom whip can, uh, tell people better about. So I think we need to discuss the pros and cons and, uh, determine what we want to do with that. But as it stands, the suggestion was to knock the twenty third of April on the head. Um, however, things may have moved on, so if I can hand over to councillor Tom whip and he can say, um, where we've got to.
Yeah, um, so I've been in talks with, um, Richard and his missus who runs the, uh, artisan market in Skipton. Um, so they used to do, uh, a four Sundays a month artisan market, um, with traders all within a fifteen mile radius who the rule is, you're gonna make it themselves or buy it directly from the people who make it. Um, so it, that's, that's why they have the name artisan. Um, so they are offering, they're quite eager to bring that market for a St George's Day, um, and organise the event, run the event, um, with us charging them rent for the, for the use of the land, um. It, so, is that enough?
Is there any input from us required at all, or is it just to taste councillor whip?
Well, Chairman, um, we have already as a town council applied for a road closure. Um, so, um, that's been agreed, so the road closure could be brought into place. But it would probably be incumbent in order to protect the town council, to ensure that that is properly implemented with the necessary signage and things like that. Um, the other issue is, I mean, my understanding and Tom will correct me if I'm wrong, is that the artisan market, um, would require stall holders to bring their own stalls. So there wouldn't be any expectation for us either to organise the market or put stalls up in the way that we'll be doing on Saturday. The other bit of it is, if it is an event, and, you know, I mean, we've already got, um, roadside boards that say St George's Day event, then there will be some expectation of an event rather than just a market. And, uh, from what I've picked up, I think Skipton are, sorry, the artisan market people are willing to organise demonstrations, lots such as wool spinning and things like that. But really, um, you know, it would probably need some entertainment. If there's going to be any entertainment, amplified music, then, um, the town council equipment would need to be employed if you're gonna do a decent job. So I don't think we could wash our hands of it entirely. Um, but I think we'd need to be clear who's doing what. Um, but all the market stuff would certainly fall on the shoulders of the artisan market people.
Council of it.
Are they still gonna be interested in taking over St George's Day when they've got an appeal in place with Skipton Town Council? From what I've been reading, they were s-.
Yes, 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 they're still interested in that one.
Even if they go back to being four Sundays at the canal basis?
Yeah, they are still interested, yeah, they've made that very clear, they're, they're very interested in Barlick. They've got a lot of customers who say, oh, why don't you come to Barlick? Um, they've, they've approached about maybe running one Sunday, one Sunday a month in Barlick with the artisan market, separate to St George's Day, not, not wrapped up with it. Um, and they'd be, yeah, they are eager to come here, they're not just, you know. Yeah.
Okay, there it is.
I think this, um, so I'm sorry.
Across the church. Sorry.
Sorry, um, we've got, uh, for you Chairman, we've got now the, the, the one artisan market on St George's Day and the possibility of a market a month after that, is there?
Or, or before, or if, I mean, that's a separate discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, i- is, i- is, is there any connection between the two? Are they going to, or, or, or are we going to see how well they do on St George's Day? Or is that to be used in any way as a test?
Um, I mean, I wouldn't think it should be a prerequisite. Um, I mean, obviously, you know, people will judge it based on that and, on opinions. Um, I mean, I think the, the two are separate. Um, we are sort of asking, you know, does the county council want them to operate it as an event, um, or not?
If they are, sorry, if, if, if they are already committed to the idea of a Sunday a month, then obviously that, that's, that's, that's irrelevant, they are separate items and they're both going to happen. I was just wondering whether there was any either or or a, any, any interaction between the two.
No.
So the Sunday a month is pretty much on as well.
It's, it's a separate thing to discuss really, yeah.
Well, I was gonna pick it up on the back of events, so.
Council of it.
If we were gonna run it an event, who in this room would pick it up to run said event alongside the artisan market? Because we can't expect Jo to do it.
Well, I mean, the technical side of things, Jo has little to no involvement anywhere. Um, save from, you know, the invoices for stuff, I mean, generally I'm there until one AM midnight the day after setting up and taking down, I mean, I've always done that.
I guess what, I think councillor has tried, we know, even had everything's had on, Jo's paid to them working, we, we want to protect that as much as possible, so.
That's the cost of the council.
And the cost to the county.
The true being cost.
That's the question.
Well, I mean, if, if the council's mind is to support it as an event and we want to have entertainment there and free family activity, I think there would need to be some kind of, um, thing there for the vision of entertainment. Um, for example, if we wanted the rise to be there to use free for kids, I mean, we could offer Marshall to come in on that basis.
That wanna be done because of the ground, eh?
I don't think that's sustainable.
I understand that heavily for that.
I think all this free entertainment every, to every month isn't sustainable.
No.
No.
If we already have an event which is a draw in its own right, i- if I'm to call, well, if, if we are to call the market an event or not to call it, if we have an occasion in the town square which is going to be a draw, then do we actually need to promote it to event? Can it not stand alone as an artisan market?
Yeah.
Well, Chairman, um, we have got twenty one roadside boards that are produced that say St George's Day event. So either we chuck them away, put them into storage, or we don't, it don't say St George's Day Market. Um, so, you know, I think, you know, that, those are ready to promote the event um, on the basis that the town council was doing an event. Um, we, we can, we can minimise the impact on the town council on draw. Um, artisan market does the market and, um, if Tom wants to, you know, sort of, with the agreement of the town council, you know, put music on or whatever, then, you know, so be it.
Uh, councillor Castle.
Okay, so when's St George's Day?
Twenty third.
So it's a quick turnaround then, it takes.
Seven weeks.
So what is the event? What, what, you must have something in mind of what the event is, wants to be, what you want the event to be. So we need to know that.
Yeah.
So that we can get our heads round what's going to be going on. And also we need to know the impact of how much it would cost. You can't just come and say that we want to do an event, we need to know the ins and outs of the event, whether we, we agree or disagree on it.
Council of it.
Well, Chairman, I mean, uh, Jo and I stopped planning for the April event uh, a little while ago, so we haven't progressed things. But ordinarily, the entertainment has comprised, um, Imogen Gibson School of Dance, um, doing a, a routine, other local, um, uh, organisations or performers putting something on. Uh, could involve Barnalswick Brass Band, uh, doing a couple of sets, that sort of stuff.
Council of it.
I think we're at the risk of burning ourselves out, as in, it's like you said, we've, we've done these four events that we've had the money for. We can't keep doing these events. I've changed the sign so it says St George's Day Market and let it be a market, the artisan market is extremely popular though. Um, I know that from working in Skipton and how many people use it, so yeah, it, I think it'd be brilliant. But I think we need to start drawing a line under the amount of events that we do, we're doing. We all volunteer as well. We are all gonna hit there now. We all have other things as well, and there's no new volunteers. And that's the sad truth, nobody's volunteering anymore. And everybody's just expecting these events to just be there. And as wonderful as they are and as popular as they are, they don't happen out of nowhere. And unfortunately, we, you then run the risk of you get people from here be saying, well, we never get that, well, your town council haven't arranged anything. Which I told someone today, well, Iby never gets it, oh, get onto your town council, because they're not prepared to do it. But we, we are prepar- prepared to do a certain amount of things. Um, Barlick's spoilt, we spoil Barlick. We have far more than a lot of other towns, but we need to see at some point. It doesn't need to stop, but it needs to filter down, there needs to be a limit.
Yes. Yeah, councillor Park.
I've got no problem with keeping the signs with the event, the market's an event, there's no point changing anything over, use the signs.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
If you want to have an additional sign next to it from the guys on the market, if they've got something you wanna put next to it, then that's fine as well. But I'm sure that we're using Facebook and everything else we've got that we use to promote our usual events, I think it'll work, anybody'll know what they're getting. You know, it's been a turn of expected, the last four events worth of activities when there's no funding for it and, and get disappointed. I think we welcome to the market now.
The more we do, the more they'll be compared to last one and the worse it will look in the long run.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you on that entirely. We've got an event, it's near enough of an event to call it an event on the boards. Especially, as you say, with, with Facebook, they'll know all the minutiae of it immediately before anyway. Um, it seems superfluous that we are trying to do something which will not add that much but will take effort and money. It's filled the gap nicely, let's make the most of it as it is.
So can I, is the suggestion then to allow the artisan market to go ahead?
Yes.
Has somebody gone to?
I'd move that.
A second?
Yeah.
Yeah. What was in favour of it, aye?
Chairman, we would need to agree to the use of town council equipment and the electric.
Yeah.
Admin that we do.
What equipment?
Well, it would be electric, it would be the road signs, um, it would be a P A. Um.
What's a P A for?
I'm sorry, music.
If you're doing demonstrate, demonstrations.
Public announcements.
I just said we weren't having entertainment.
They're gonna put on the entertainment, aren't they, they're, they're doing their own sort of stuff.
They're doing it.
Their, the, man's team is their.
The resolution was to allow the artisan market to go ahead with their, doing their bit.
Mm-hmm.
No additional or benefit from us.
Yes, but we can provide a P A to do, if, say if Imogen wants to do dancing, we could put music to that.
Yeah.
So who's doing that?
Well, me and David, I mean, we've always done it, mm.
No, it's, who's, who's speaking to Imogen and getting Imogen to do it?
Not you.
Not you.
But this is my question, because I don't wanna, um, don't act in this.
No, no.
No, no.
As the market will, will all go answer.
Aye.
Yeah.
If the market are taking, uh, are taking this all, all to themselves and we're very grateful for it, can't we just agree on principle that we'll, um, loo- look to any, any, uh, materials and whatever that they need?
Well, no, we need to, there needs to be a clear decision, whether the, whether, whether the town council agrees to use equipment or not.
We've only got seven weeks to plan. Mm.
If it's not, then.
I think, I think i- if we have the equipment, I mean, the suggestion is if we have the equipment to hand, are we willing for the market to use it?
Yeah.
Doesn't matter what equipment it is, if we've got it to hand, are we willing for them to use it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, like brass band need pay in, is that coming through town council, that's what the question is?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was my question earlier, um, I mean, if the artisan market offering to pay a licence fee and a rent to operate on the day, I mean, I think we should, um, give that as a granting kind to, you know, to hire brass band, um, sort of thing.
So my other question is, what about the market stalls that are booked onto every other market?
Or.
Um.
We offer them to artisan market?
Yeah, I'll just send the list.
Cause a lot of them will be classed as artisan market.
A lot of them are though, yeah.
Yeah.
No, they actually are from Skipton, so, but some other people are already booked on. So to term and say they can't be on because they don't make their own stuff, it's a bit like.
No, 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 because it's, it's not an artisan market, it's just the artisan market, they're doing it as St George's Day market.
Right. I'm reading it. Right, yeah.
It's not advertised as the artisan market.
But they, so, sorry, I tried to go through you, but, um, so, a lot of our market stall holders don't have their own market stalls.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we need to liaise with them, we need to liaise with them, we need to say they can.
We're arranging up back in the same ownership.
We're going round in circles, we are going round in circles.
We need more information.
We're either doing it or we're not doing it.
Well. They can't have a sto- through you, Chair, they can't have a stall unless they bring their own market stall, I think.
Yeah, it would be up to artisan market to organise.
Organisation of the entire event, uh, say that.
If, if they offer to put up a, a stall for them using our stall role,
Yeah.
are we gonna say they can do that or not?
Say that again, sorry Tom, I couldn't hear.
Well, we've, 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 we've bought even more stalls now, haven't we?
We have got, yeah, yes.
Let it work. Um, if, if the artisan market are saying, right, we'll put the stalls up, um, for, for someone who we've booked on who doesn't have one, can we use our stall?
Are using the, the other things, are using our casuals, so that's what.
Well, I, I don't think so.
See, that comes back to me in the law.
See, I know.
No, no, no.
We're just, we're just trying to circumvent something that's just been agreed by a tagging on, tagging on, tagging on, we can't.
Mm.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's just back to use of the, use of equipment and, you know, it's not, not saying we're using any of our staff.
If they have the people set our stalls up, they can use our stalls?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Not, they can't use our casual labour unless they use them as their casual labour and they arrange it. If they can tell you and ask you names, would you be willing to give them names?
Oh, yeah.
Essent- essentially what we're talking about now is
I'd go that way, would you, yeah.
The event that you were talking about before, instead of running through the council, running through the artisan market and the council not taking any responsibility at all for that event.
Chairman, I, I don't think we can, uh, w- walk away and say we do not have responsibility.
We've, we've still got to.
Barnalswick Town Council putting the road closure, you know, that is our responsibility
That, that's ours.
and we would need to ensure that that is.
Other, other, other than the road closure, I mean, everything else, the organisation of it,
Yeah.
essentially is, is nothing to do with us at all.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just gonna say you can use the square for your event and we'll do the road closure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, as a, as a show of good faith, um, they've agreed to send the agreement that they have with Skipton Town Council for use of the basin,
Mm-hmm.
just minus any sensitive information.
The current.
So it will simply be that they'd work.
Do we have an idea of cost for charges, charges, charging for the market?
Chairman, I would suggest that in lieu of, um, uh, any, you know, sort of, uh, significant charge, that we, we say as a town council, we'd like them to put that value into the event so that, you know, the example of Barnalswick Brass Band, if they wanted to book Barnalswick Brass Band, they'd book Barnalswick Brass Band from what they would otherwise have given us.
I'm sorry, my head's a little.
I'm sorry.
So it's just.
But, but we're, we're, we're not charging them for the use of the town square on whatever we were, if they can use, on the basis that they
Councillors' stories.
Yeah.
And on the basis of.
arrange their own entertainment to evaluate.
I see.
Don't really use that money to.
Sorry, it really has been a long day, I, I understand.
Uh, I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
And, and Chairman, not to labour the point, but, um, the, the initial offer from Skip, the, sorry, keep saying Skip. The artisan market people was for them to bring people in who would have their own stalls.
Yeah.
Jo raised the issue of the market traders that we've had coming on using the town council stalls. So then the question was, um, well, how would they manage? So I think that's what Tom is suggesting.
Comes back to the equipment question.
The, the, you know, if we've said they can use equipment, they can use equipment. Again, we cannot absolve the town council for responsibility, we need to ensure that things are done properly. And for instance, electric, you know, you've got to ensure that that's properly protected. The stalls are only put up if wind speeds are less than twenty five miles an hour and all that sort of stuff.
I mean, that, that would all be in the, you know, agreement.
This is, yeah, that'd all, all be in the agreement anyway.
Yeah.
But there's no issues with that, I mean.
We need more information on that, for you.
An idea of what, uh,
Yeah.
so we can find, find out, then we can say yes or no.
I don't think that.
But, well, I think.
We need to say it tonight.
We'd say. Is it, is it not, sorry.
There's only a seven week lead time.
Sorry, councillor Castle just got the.
Is it, is it, sorry, sorry.
Is it not just equipment that David and Tom normally set up?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That we don't have no idea what they're doing?
It is exactly it, yeah.
So why do we need to know what's been used?
So. Yeah, my head's so funny, can we just speak English, right? The equipment we're talking about, are you two sitting there saying that you're gonna set it up and take it down again?
Yeah.
He's saying this when it's.
Right.
So you're gonna be a one man working on this.
I'm moving away from it now.
All, all I'm trying, all, you understand that the main thing that I'm trying to protect here is the clerk from
Yes.
any further responsibilities, right?
Absolutely.
So I'm more than happy, or I suppose I'm happy, if everyone else is, for people to use the equipment, for anybody to volunteer to help on the day, so long as the admin side of it and the organisation side of it is not sacked in this room.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Councillor Castle.
I can see one organisation thing that will go to Joanne, our clerk, and that will be people ringing up from the market that Joanne has sorted out, ringing up saying, well, I want to be on it, whereas then Joanne
Tucked up, is it?
is gonna have to be on the other end of the phone with a telephone number to send them there.
That's, that's.
Chairman. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need contact.
Yeah.
But he's still answering the phones.
Yeah, and, and it's a proactive draw, sending him out saying, you know, because
Yeah.
of, you know, sort of taking too much on, the town council has got artisan market to run it, that's who you talk to.
For use, for, for us to do.
Um, and.
Yeah, as long as I've got a liaison with them, I, I can split them on corner, I'll put in an email address and phone number.
Yeah. And. And the other thing.
Also, it's a mark of it.
The, the other thing I would suggest, Chairman, is that we actually, the stall holders who rock up on Saturday actually get a note so that they've got it in black and white, this is what.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's stupid.
Okay.
We need, we could do with knowing how much charging for it.
Well, I don't think anyone does.
Well, that's, that's, that's up to them.
But if I'm to give them a note, oh, then.
Just give him a note with the telephone number.
Then they can bring him asking out how much the charging, and that's their done, so it's.
Yeah.
So, do we have a resolution?
Chairman, I, I think it's, we agreed to, um, there being artisan, uh, there being a market organised by artisan markets on twenty third of April, we're agreeing to the use of town council equipment and I think that needs to have a rider on subject to, uh, uh, you know, councillor Tom whip, um, taking sort of responsibility for, uh, that equipment.
Yeah.
Um and then thirdly, the in lieu of um the town council getting anything, I mean, we it may be we want to take a nominal pound off them, but in lieu of a, you know, a significant uh uh fee for operating the market, um that the artisan market, they're required to um provide um entertainment to an equivalent value, yeah.
You have a second, Tom? Yeah, council's written, thank you. All those are favourites, yeah.
Do a significant value.
Significant value.
Well.
Yes. Similar value.
How it's equivalent is.
Yeah, we we don't, we haven't spec- specified what it would be, but.
Need to specify that value as well.
We need to benchmark it.
Chairman, rooms, two two more things.
Oh, yeah, room one, I've got the cover now.
Running on from that, in amongst, councillor Tom Whip said artisan market are interested in coming and operating a market on a Sunday.
Yeah.
Or at least one Sunday a month and um given that artisan market have got the um hard word from this uh the Fattorinis or Skipton Town Council or whoever it may be, that they can't operate on all the Sundays in the month and they can only operate on one Sunday a month. Um as councillor Tom Whip said, artisan market are keen to come and try in Barnoldswick. So, um given that we have the consent to operate a market, I think it falls to the town council to say, do we want to um uh 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 have artisan market operate in such market in the Times Square um on a Sunday? Now, I mean I was present when Tom was talking to them uh on Saturday and, I mean, I chipped in that, you know, Barnoldswick is not busy on the Sunday, you know, that virtually all the shops and everything is shut. And they fully acknowledge the fact, you know, that i- it's quiet and they said when they started in the canal base and it was quiet there as well. So they're willing to suck it and see and I think an early indication from the town council as to whether, you know, we would be willing to enter in to some sort of arrangement with them would be helpful in progressing the uh uh the discussions.
Council's written, sorry.
Would would that be on a on a basis of them just arriving and we not having to support it in any way, not buy any equipment or anything?
Well, I think there is.
Or would they want, would they want the similar sort of support that we've just offered for the Saint George's?
There is the question of electric, um and I think apart from that, no, not really.
Just electricity?
Just, yeah.
Chairman, I I think there may, there may be something else, um but that would depend on how successful they were and um it would be if they needed to extend beyond the perimeter of the town square and they were talking about setting up on the highways, in which case there would need to be road closures in place. Now, Lancashire County Council, we've we've had this as a town council, um Lindsay, I remember when um uh the county council kicked up about us wanting to close a road.
Donkeys.
Well, we well, we got round it with donkeys, but i- the we when we had, when we did the bid,
Pretty much, actually.
the county council wouldn't give us a road closure because what we wanted to do was put the market, which was displaced off the square, onto the highway. Um um they said, well, you know, you can't, we, you know, we don't do it for like commercial operations like that. So I think there's a question mark as to whether, if they got to the point where they were, you know, sort of needing to do something on the roads as well, whether it would land on the town council desk to get the road closures because otherwise L C C would just kick them back.
That's that's future state law, isn't it? I mean, that's not coming.
No, but I think we're going to witness eyes open, not.
I meant aware of it, yeah, but I think that's not necessarily required to be agreed today.
No.
Council of Oil, you had your hand up.
That's enough.
I forgot what I was.
Right.
You just charged them for the road closure, didn't you? Because if they were to shut the road, they'd put more stalls on it and then we just won't move in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Council's written.
Yeah, I I just think in in the light of the fact that it may or may not be successful, I think the decision for us now is to go with the Times Square market.
Yeah.
If it grows to the point where they then come to us and say, we've got more and more interest and it's successful, we want to look at it, bring it back in.
Did you could use all the sets and all the way around the square, got you? That space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's across the back, you could fit nine eight by fours, 'cause I'm that sad that I've known that, but you could fit five up by the side.
Mm.
I have to allow.
Right. So that would be eighteen, that would be twenty eight stalls, which is something.
Right. So, asu- assuming the the resolution is to allow the market to proceed on a Sunday
Fair market, that.
in the square with a future possibility of coming back to the council for extension.
Yeah.
Mm.
Great. That's your resolution. Have we a second for Calum, heard all those are favourites of that? Smash it.
So. So how do we know what fee would that be?
Well.
Not if it's agreed on, huh?
To be decided.
I I think, Chairman, there needs to be further discussion, we need to.
Way.
Subgroup.
Refer it to general purposes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in the meantime.
Look, we've got a market.
No, we have one.
Shook it to my, shook it to G P.
Shook everything to G P, you know.
We have, we already have a a little subgroup for market.
Have we?
I'll just send them to that.
Yeah.
Will they?
I don't know. I know I was on it.
I was on it. Duncan's on it.
So that's me.
No, there there was, I think, Calum, what what was that?
Don't look at me.
Markets.
Right, we can look back.
Yes, we can look back to find the subgroup then, yeah.
I'm on that. And it, 'cause it was it was fun there that we got the.
What about it?
So, yeah, so there is a subgroup.
Right, I'll look for it.
I'll look for it.
That's right.
Anything else on the group?
Chairman, I'm I'm the 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 final thing, um the final thing was, given the informal discussion that we had
Thanks.
cutting back on the um the events programme, um the second event in June, which was um a proposed platinum picnic in the park, uh that's been abandoned and I think we need to note that. And then we've got several events that are putative events that were um mentioned for next winter and I think we as a town council refer that back to G P uh and say, in the light of capacity, um you know, we don't think that they're doable, so can that be looked at again?
Sure.
Yeah.
So that that was it, Chairman, so I'm moving the minutes with those additional recommendations, resolutions and everything.
Thank you. Council of Gas can afford it all.
Um will you check, can I just ask the clerk, did we get an email from that lady at the church?
She's on the program.
No, about that picnic that she wanted to do.
When it cuts out. No.
No, I forgot about that. Sorry, thank you.
I thought we were talking about the cut out, so.
Basically, a lady came in and asked if they could run the picnic in the park, but she was going to get something too, and she hasn't, so.
Definitely didn't have anything that's in part, yeah.
Thank you.
I must send it to them.
Do you want one?
No, I thought I was. Where were we?
Be able to do it with G P, maybe.
The county paper.
Okay, so it's beaten off it.
I'll find it, see, just note for council minutes, yeah.
I don't.
Yeah.
Item number six finances attached, I don't know if you've seen finances.
Moving.
All the favourite movements here.
Um can I move the resolution uh to give authority to the clerk to make payments prior to the next meeting of the council?
Can I tag on to that? From the informal meeting that we had, um the the town clerk has discretion, or will have discretion, discretionary spend. However, that discretionary spend shouldn't be used for items that have been rejected at town council meetings. Is that okay?
Chairman.
Discretionary spend, but the discretionary spend should not be used for items that have been formally rejected at town council meetings.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Is there an amendment?
What about spends that close to budgets? In the reaching a budget amount and going over budget?
That's that's different to the.
That's the judgment of the board.
Yeah, Chairman, the um the rule is, the committees can spend uh within their remit as long as it's within their budget.
Yeah, I think what council head is getting at is the is things that are about to go over budget. So there shouldn't be any spending that goes on over budget for that committee, for that event.
Just a general procedure.
Why, do you?
Well, we're we're over budget on the fire and ice, we're over, we were over budget on the food festival, so we weren't aware of those.
Chairman?
Council.
No, we're not over budget. The previous agreements of the town council and the committee were to expend the um uh events budget on an event in December, which I think was the Saltskis celebration, and what was discussed was that should we achieve funding through West Craven together for enhanced um uh events, then that residual budget would uh be spread over the remaining um events within this financial year. And we are not exceeding the overall spend.
I see, I see what you're doing. So the event, the event budget itself isn't, hasn't overspent.
Yeah. No, and it was always the expectation that the um fire and ice event, because it entailed five thousand two hundred and fifty, was it? Or five thousand five hundred for the ice sculptures, would cost more than the nine and a half thousand, which was the grant funding that we were getting in. Um there was always an expectation that the town council would have to dib in uh to make that stack up.
Okay. So then, right, that's different to the discretionary spend anyway, so we can just agree that discretionary spend is far far we can carry on. The second of that, all those are favourite discretionary spend. Right, anything else on finances now that we've done with that here?
Oh, don't get my question.
Answer the question, you're okay, yeah?
I am for open.
What's that?
Cultural breakfast, I know what it is.
Um, but we have the next one, yes, council of gas.
Chair.
Hardly.
Mm.
Have we had um um an estimate of what gas will be over the next year for the Civic?
Um no, not for Civic Hall, 'cause we've had a bit of an issue with that Corona energy, ironically, I believe. The it's um have not been a charging, a daily charge for the last two years. It goes out by direct debit, as far as I'm concerned, account for clearing have come back to us, we've been dealing with that. Um and no, hands put.
Uh just another th- another thing on on that bit, if I can, I don't know if I can bring it on this.
I do need to get.
Would we, well, just to jog your memories in that, would we have to look at rents for basements and things like that if our gas goes up then?
For the Civic Hall.
Yeah. But I don't think, I don't know whether we should bring that up here or not.
Of course.
Very.
It it's finances, so.
Um Chairman, the uh the lease for the county council's use of the basement of the Civic Hall includes a provision that they shall be responsible for any gas that they have used. And that's set out within the the agreement,
Right.
which the town council inherited from um Pendle Council. It transpired that Pendle Council hadn't been charging the county council for the gas and uh Joe has been in negotiation with the county council
That's the case.
for a protected period of time for them to stump up
No, the ground.
the 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 gas for the period of time that the town council has um uh, you know, been responsible for the building and, you know, it it's a, you know, it's a four figure sum.
It's a contract issue.
But it will go into a five figure sum uh points in.
That's better.
There is a a further wrinkle in the ointment in the um oh, I'm sorry, Chairman, there are three boilers in the plant room.
No, two, one of them's not in the plant room.
One. No, right, well, there are three boil, the
There are four in the building.
the the there's more than one.
Sorry, I didn't realise this.
There's, right, there's a, there's a, there's a boiler that heats the upper floors, which the town council is directly responsible for.
Ah.
There's a boiler in the same plant room which heats the main part of the basement. There is then a third boiler and and that is on a separate meter, so I wish you know how much gas it uses. There is then a third boiler down in the basement that op- that heats another bit.
The old D S S.
Oh, right, yeah.
Of of, well, the back bit.
Yeah. It's freezing in that bit, yeah, doesn't it?
And it it was only when that boiler broke down that the pe- the person that came to fix it said, well, that boiler isn't on that gas meter that feeds downstairs, that's on your gas meter, you know, the way the upstairs bit. So the wrinkle in the ointment is the, you know, apart from, you know, an estimation, we've no idea how much gas the county council have been using to heat part of the basement that they operated.
So it's freezing, it's never on.
I I.
So.
Gets better, last week we discovered that the water meter within the building doesn't split, we've been paying for all that water too.
Yeah, so there are outstanding issues with the county council which Joe has been pursuing and um.
That solicitors from Barle, just throwing, blowing mine a little bit.
But why not? Barle's excellent.
No.
Because one of my people.
Um I, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think you need to know, to be honest.
No, sorry, I didn't, I just wondered if rents were going up.
But if 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 they stump up what they owe, then, you know, the costs are are covered, um yeah.
Why not?
I think was Lindsay also asking about the other bookings in Civic?
Mm.
Uh with the general rates we're paying for gas and electric in the building as a whole, it's going to, in real terms.
It's going to increase, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need to probably convene the building subcommittee, the working group and just discuss that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that.
Report back to G P with the findings.
Yeah.
Are you on item seven?
Um I've gone here, but I I don't even know if I'm.
I'm working with them.
I almost said that.
We've just started it.
Uh.
Site of seven, yes.
Chairman,
Yes.
we 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 did look at these
Yeah, we did.
r- uh relatively recently, so um and we did agree to some minor changes. Um could I suggest that
Essentially.
we we um uh re- reaffirm our decision from the previous meeting and uh a- a- agree to them as they stand.
our decision from the previous meeting and, uh, a- a- agree to them as they stand, pro temp.
Sure.
On the brain. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. But this is a shop, this is a secret, I apologise, I won't. Item A, to consider a request from Gisborne Road School, to recruit, to consider a request from Gisborne Road School to use the town square to perform the main pole dancing on Friday the sixth of May, twenty twenty-two, at ten AM.
Yeah, yeah, that's what.
Yeah, move it.
No, that is, that's Emily's turn.
Council whip.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that, and the provision that they share the time machine with us.
Yeah, always a favourite.
Great, excellent, you can all go and watch them.
They're going to be twenty, two thousand.
When do you get the time machine?
Somebody get the DeLorean out of the garage.
Uh, item number nine, to consider a request from Barnows at Gala Group, to consider a request from the Gala Group to hold an event on the twenty-third of July in the town square. Request includes use of electricity, market stalls, gazebos, road closure and barriers. Anybody like to come in on that, please? Joanne, Jo. Right.
No.
Have we got an item for this?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got my names, yeah, this is the correspondence with them.
I've got it.
Is that that one?
Chairman, if it, if it happens.
Yeah, it does.
We had previously agreed to have an event in July, um, with a p-, potential day of dance, which I don't think.
That's coming up as well.
Okay, um, yeah, well, my suggestion was that they try and combine the two.
No, didn't work, right.
They won't.
No, it was the day of dance and the Malpkin Morris that you wanted to combine. There's three requests over July, but one of them was the age to have a, a form, a more quest.
Can I just, when, when's the beach?
Um, first, the twenty-second of August.
All right, okay.
So I think we start setting up the beach seven days before the first of August or something like that, or?
Which is around the date of the protest.
Yeah, ask the question, and then I ask you, and then I went back to her.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the, is, is, is that the?
This is the weekend of the twenty-third of July, right?
Is it? That's a Saturday, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so that wouldn't interfere with any settlement for the beach.
Okay. Um, we're happy for them to use electricity, market stalls, gazebos, road closures, barriers. I don't even know what they're doing. What are they actually doing?
They've done it before.
What in the past, because the weekend broke up, the whole is.
They've been doing electric, they've been doing lots.
Hmm, they've done a lot. They did very well last time.
Public liability.
Made a lot of money.
Well, chairman, I think we're running into the same issues with what we've just discussed earlier.
Yes, I agree.
Um, if they're prepared to cover the costs of our casual workers to set up said things, I'd, you know. But then again, that, that still requires.
It's gonna be fully organised, again, this would definitely fully organised by them without power input and so on and so forth.
Yeah, well, I mean, the use of our gazebos, um, yeah, market stalls.
Council whip.
Is there anybody willing to liaise with the Gala Group on behalf of everybody else to arrange this that isn't sat over there taking the minutes?
Chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm content to do that. Um, my suggestion would be that in terms of if they want market stalls, that we do it on the basis of, um, similar to we did for Gisborne Road School or St Andrews over here. Um, and that's a, as a town council, we consent to them being used.
Yeah.
Subject to, you know, the necessary, um, uh, they'd need our public liability insurance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, and that we don't have any direct involvement with their erection dismantling, but that we would require them to pay, uh, a contractor, Duncan, the market manager, for him to supervise the erection and taking down. So that we've got control over the safety aspects, they pay him, um, and the town council is out of the loop.
We, we need to ensure a level of competence to be with our equipment, I mean, if, if they hurt themselves using it, you'd be the ones in trouble with that.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree, I agree.
Not sure what they mean by barriers.
Not much. I'm assuming, assuming it's part of the road closure barriers, signage type stuff.
It's so expensive. Sorry. Yeah, I think it's all one. On a side note, do we ever get our barriers back?
From St Joseph's, still in the ground. So it says, town square closed after Slavodrome from last time, it's pretty much the same as the other events for town, so we'll need barriers. Fairground, we'll get to commercial, stores, market, I'm ensuring how many stalls we ha-, can have or that it's generally used. Music, last time we used a wagon from Matthew Kibble for stage, I don't know if this is still okay or do we need to use him, like the light switch on? Would require electric hookup, don't know. Barbecue, we borrowed this last time, I had it cordoned down, street games, performers, get local clubs, et cetera, involve like football, rugby, et cetera. Is it a gazebo we can borrow and help visit? Um, so would be road closure, barriers, stores, electric.
I love this little example. Council whip.
Well, um, the, for the, I mean, the intention was, uh, that we'd have the deck on there. Not sure, will it be there then? Yes, it will, yeah, it will, yeah. So the, the deck will be on the square and subject to the consent of the town council available for use. Um, again, you know, i- i- if, if they were wanting to set up their own P A, that's fine, subject to public liability risk assessment and pact and all that sort of stuff.
We don't do.
Um, gazeboes, if, if, I mean, if we'd got one set up on top of that deck, which is the intention, then of course they could use that. If they wanted additional gazeboes, it'd have to be on some sort of basis similar to the market stalls, you know.
Yeah.
They're under our supervision because we don't want our gazeboes getting broken. But they'd have to do the humping and dumping.
It was a table and chairs, but it's not really relevant, it's not really relevant.
You don't want to use them?
Where would they go?
Don't know.
Because we'd have them in that on my deck.
Yeah.
Well, they'd have to be used.
I, I, I suspect in July we'd have them out on a daily basis again by last year.
But they're putting the forms on.
If we're going to get one at Kibble lorries in middle of the. We've took the tires and chaps.
We use the lorries.
I've still want the way missing, that's all.
I like them, yeah. I think that's got us on page.
I don't know.
They'd have to be.
That's it.
Oh, is it? All right.
They might be killed. So have we got, um, uh, uh, a resolution to, uh, anybody? I'm lost.
I, I think what I'm suggesting, chairman, is that subject to them providing, uh, public liability, you know, demonstrated public liability insurance, adequate risk assessments, uh, uh, we agree to the use of town council equipment, including the deck, the stage.
Yeah.
Um, um, but, but they have to provide all the labour, um, and any necessary transportation required and any sort of, um, structures.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it has to be under the supervision of, um, a competent, um, person nominated by the town council.
Okay, Duncan.
Or, or.
That's fine.
I, I'm, chairman, I agree to liaise with whoever.
Salvage.
Salvage. Okay, do we have a second for that? The council's written a second, in all the favour. Uh, item ten, flag raising procedures, consider the flag raising procedures as presented. Yes, what's yes? Council whip will suggest that just to do, yeah, okay, do we have any on council whip?
Can I move an amendment?
You can try.
No, I'm on, moving an amendment.
Oh, she can.
Um, uh, to delete, uh, erecting a flag on Lancashire there. As was pointed out at the, uh, previous meeting, um, the protocol is that, um, towns can raise their county flag. And our county flag is the Yorkshire flag. And therefore we hope not to be raising the Lancashire flag, so I so move it.
Okay, and then council whip.
We were a member of the historical county of West Yorkshire in Barnoldswick. We are no longer part of that because it doesn't exist. But to be fair, we even do both on either, neither.
Good point.
Okay, anyone else?
It's because we technically don't belong to either.
Council whip.
If you're going to go into technicalities, yes, we, we do belong to, to Yorkshire. I mean, the whole thing of, of counties is, you know, no matter where you are in the country is.
When we go to town, we need to respect actual people in the town.
Is, is.
Let's just hang on, let him finish.
The, the whole thing with counties in the UK now is, they've been that jumbled up over the centuries that, to the honest, you can go anywhere and there'll be some conflict with it. Um, but, I mean, if you approach the Lancashire society and the Yorkshire society, I think firmly, we should be raising the Yorkshire flag.
Mm.
Um, and, I mean, they are the ones who advocate for the flying of county flags. It's not something, um, you know, that's a nationwide thing. It's supported by those societal groups, um, you know, mainly it's, it, it's, it's people who enjoy the history. And, you know, it's, it's them we should be, uh, listening to on this really. Um, I mean, if, if the council wants to ask the, the York society, the Lancashire society, the appropriateness of, of either, that's fine by me. Um, we, we go with that.
Council church.
Chairman, do we not have this question to make any addition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then, if, if we have that discretion, then there is no logical reason why we should do away with it. There is no, we don't need to follow protocol if there is no protocol saying that you must not do it. If we have the choice, then we have the choice. It doesn't matter whether it is right in some people's book or wrong in some people's book. If we have the choice to do it and thus restore the balance of this border town, which is a, a, a great strength of the personality of the town and all of that, if we have that discretion, why is anybody arguing that by protocol we should not? If we can and we have the choice and it's a free choice, then let's use it. Use them both.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, if there's nobody else wishing to speak, I'd just like to reply to the debate, um, to say that there is a protocol that says you can fly your county flag. Um, remain part of the historic west riding of Yorkshire. And that was enshrined in the nineteen seventy-four, uh, Local Government Act. And, um, that is our county town. So therefore, um, you know, the protocol should be respected and, um, you know, the council will vote and no doubt the council will do what it wants.
I do think, I do, I do think that actually, yeah, you could, you're right in saying that we are still part of Barnoldswick, it's still part of Yorkshire, uh, the, the location of where it is. However, we are also part of Lancashire.
We're administered by Lancashire.
Exactly, which makes us part of Lancashire whether we like it or not.
Yeah.
We are physically located in Yorkshire, but we are still part of Lancashire as well, so, uh, for my own.
In, in that case.
Chairman, I've, I've replied to the debate.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
We could, we could fly the Lancashire County Council flag, but, I mean, that's the s-, that's the connection. You know, a- administered by, I mean, we don't fly the Pendle flag, is there a Pendle flag? I don't know. But, no, I'm sorry, but that's the logical step.
You don't, you don't even know there's a flag and you're saying fly a flag, right, anyway. So the initial one, sorry, council church.
May I reply to council whip?
Chairman, I've responded to the debate.
Yeah.
The, the procedure is, we have the debate, the move or the motion, uh, well, this, in this case, the amendment, responds to the, the thing, and you take a vote.
Okay.
We shouldn't be giving backers and followers.
We actually got that with some followers though.
We'll, we'll take a vote on the amendment to, to, um, remove the Lancashire day, but fly every other one. Do we have a second for that? Council whip, in all the favour. Okay, back to the original, to fly all the flags.
Against.
Those against, sorry, sorry, those against the amendment.
I don't need to add to that.
Then back to the original, with, uh, to fly all the flags, do we have a second?
Chairman, can I put a further amendment?
Sure.
Um, could I propose that the, um, uh, flag raising, um, uh, ceremonies or events, um, it's an addendum, to ask the general purposes committee to consider any civil, um, uh, uh, memorials or significant commemorations that it may be appropriate to, uh, erect flags for.
Just a moment.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so an example that I would give, um, uh, could be uh, Holocaust Day, um, uh, uh, you know, things of that nature.
I understand, yeah, yeah, I understand, yeah, yeah. Council head, Richard.
I'll second that addendum.
Okay. So the addendum, the second addendum, trying to speak now, is to, is to raise all the flags on your respective day and to go back to the G P to, to.
Refer it to G P.
Refer it to G P.
To look at.
To look at, um, any other civic day.
Consolidations.
Yeah, okay.
Um, in a, in addition to that, chair, um, councils up and down the country have been flying Ukrainian flags in solidarity. Um, I think we should be flying them too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, could I have that one as well?
Yeah, so I'm buying one.
Yeah, yeah, you're not, you don't need to.
You'd have to.
Not to say.
So.
You don't need to buy the, the same hand made quality as our, our regular ones, no, just the one with the flag.
Nick, go on, do one. Two.
One.
One for the.
Do we have to fly the flagpole or from the Civic, flagpole, from the flagpole?
Council's written it.
Just to get it clear in my mind, did, did we not vote to buy a set of flags excluding the Lancashire flag?
No, we, we, we did buy.
No, you're the buyer, he came back again, but he was missing something.
That's fine, no worries.
So.
Just double check, isn't it?
How would you forget?
We've, we've, we've had a first, we've had a second and an amendment to the first and the second. Although those are in favour of all, I'd say yeah.
Right, and a whole of them. When it was.
Oh, we'll see how long it takes to come.
Does anyone know how big the one on the flagpole is?
Two and a half yards.
Two and a half.
Right, I'll try and buy it tonight, then come.
Don't, don't buy the hand, someone's having one.
And I also take responsibility for all this.
Excellent.
And we'll do all the work.
Cheers.
Uh, item eleven. To consider the request from Malcolm Morris and the Roughly, Roughians, to consider a request to use the town square for a day of dance on the second of July, twenty twenty-two. Anybody? Council head.
It's a lot of events in July coming up, um, people wanting to use the square and that. Is it worth putting together a small working group to take this away and look at them all and see if they can into one day?
Council whip.
Chairman, I think we've, we've said yes to the first one. I think, you know, to say that now would, would be a bit unfair on the organisation of this.
And they're still on its legs.
They're, they're asking for a lot less as well, yeah, it's, um.
We just, I think we're sold to use the square for a dance.
If, if they want to use the square. Just to turn up dance and.
Ma-, it's Morris dancing, they don't even need it yet.
Morris dancing.
So they just come.
How are they doing it?
They have their own bells.
In dance, so it's basically in dance and out.
So, yeah, yeah.
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 Coun-, council.
I'll, I'll move, if I can finish, I'll move, that may, uh, allow these.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So, council guys.
No, sorry.
Can I just ask something on this one? I'm not here, so. Will somebody come? Does somebody come, like, show them, like, to go? Not in a hurry, right?
I was gonna say, you're doing quite good at that. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Right, okay.
Um, I'm not sure if I'm here.
I'm on the back of a motorbike.
So, the mov- the movement is, is to allow that to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
Excellent.
Councillor Heard, all of the favour.
Excellent.
Item twelve, to the, consider the request for the use of Victory Park by Pendle School Partnership for, uh, orienteering event.
I've done it before, the one.
Twenty second, twenty seventh of April, twenty twenty two.
Move it.
All of the favour, yeah.
Second date, and and just say we should let parks know if we're told we can go ahead, so that we're aware.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, item thirteen, to consider the proposal, road traffic regulations order for Albert Road, uh.
Has everyone seen it? I did see.
Councillor.
Yeah, Chairman, well, it 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 was, um, circulated, uh, separately
Oh, yeah.
a few, a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and and the, the pro- the proposal is
Sorry.
that there'd be a traffic regulation order, um, the set page section of Albert Road, there would be a prohibition of driving, an absolute prohibition of driving, between ten a m and four p m, uh, uh, on a daily basis. And that only vehicles, uh, loading or unloading would be permitted, uh, after four o'clock in the afternoon or before ten a m in the morning. And then there is, um, another bit of it which would make the very bottom section of Frank Street one way. Um. The, I I'd like to propose, Chairman, that the town council object to the proposed traffic regulation order. And, uh, I can give you a f- a form of words.
Yeah.
Um, but firstly, it's the, um, impracticality of deliveries being made between ten a m and four p m. Um, and as somebody that spends quite a lot of time on the square, I see just how many deliveries come along. Carpet shop, um, and, you know, you're not gonna tell a lorry driver that's got forty, fifty drops on that they've got to come to Barlett first thing in the morning and then drive thirty miles an hour to, you know, sort of go on the route or indeed come after four o'clock in the afternoon. Just doesn't work like that. And the businesses on Albert Road are very, uh, concerned that, um, this might be the case. So, it's impracticality for a start. Uh, the second issue is in terms of its necessity. Um, when the town square was created in nineteen ninety, um, it was thought that this sort of prohibition of driving would be necessary. In practice, the, um, you know, there haven't been any, uh, collision, um, casualties. Um, and, you know, people have used the sets during the day, um, appropriately, without, uh, I would say, much difficulty. The problem has been with the bollards and the management of the bollards. And initially, the bollards were, uh, intended to be locked and all the shopkeepers had a key and they could open the bollards, let people in. But the bollards that are there now are are very heavy and not everybody is able to handle them. So sometimes they get taken out, they don't get put back in, which then allows inappropriate people to drive through. And and we want to stop that. Um, as part of the town square work, which is due to recommence, um, uh, in twenty first of March, um, we'll take that with a pinch of salt, but as part of that work, a new set of bollards is to go in, which will be lightweight and easily liftable out and put back in again. So, the problem of inappropriate people driving through, which they shouldn't do, uh, will be dealt with by a physical bollard, sort of stopping that from happening. Um.
Which is what we had before, wasn't it?
Well, what we should have had before, but because, I mean, once one of the bollards is stuck in, you know, they're they're not easy. Um, and then there is a a technical issue in that, um, I have been told, and I haven't seen the documentary evidence, but, um, I have been told by, um, traffic engineers that that section of, uh, road was stopped up as highway, a legal process, uh, thirty odd years ago. And the, the traffic regulation orders can only apply to, uh, roads that are maintainable at public expense by the highway authority. And because it was stopped up technically, it it, you know, it it's not possible to put T R O on it. And then, uh, the final point is if this, uh, traffic regulation order and the consequential one-way bit is put in, it will lead to a proliferation of poles because there'll have to be more signs gone in. Um, we just spent, or or in the midst of spending a small fortune making the square look more aesthetically pleasing, you know, actually rationalising the street furniture and getting rid of it and, you know, making it, um, a more open and, uh, more attractive, um, space. And the county council, by implementing this, would be putting loads of poles in. So, i- it's for those reasons I'm proposing that we object. Um, the area committee of Pendle Council has sent a similar, uh, objection in, and that was agreed unanimously, uh, from West Devon Area Committee. So Pendle Council is objecting, and I say that we should join them.
Okay. Counselor Heard.
Second law.
Thank you very much. All of the favour. Cool.
I can't stop thinking.
Mm? I can't stop thinking. Um, item fourteen, considering the items arising from the town meeting held on the second of March, I think there was any, was there?
There was one, wrong.
Was it?
That one, we just discussed.
Got discussed between you.
There you go.
No.
We need to discuss.
Town meeting, clinic.
Oh, the clinic.
The clinic. Yorkshire Bank.
Yorkshire Bank, the suitability of Yorkshire Bank for being a clinic. Councillor, uh, O'Callaghan.
It is by no means suitable, what Barnardwick means is its own medical centre and has one for a long, long time. Three treatment room rooms are not sufficient to replace the Boots Clinic.
Couldn't agree more. Anybody else?
Not the Boots Clinic down and build something on that line or something.
Anybody else have a opinion, uh, Counselor Whit?
Um, I think we should echo the area committee's suggestion that, uh, Reynold Road Car Park could be used as a site, town centre location accessible. Um.
Chairman?
Yeah.
It's okay, I hear you.
Yeah, um, and that, yeah, as Jody says, Yorkshire bank's not suitable.
Chairman, I think the important thing is that we don't want a replacement for Boots Clinic.
No.
What we want is a new health centre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would accommodate, uh, all the health services and facilities, under one roof, uh, fully accessible, uh, you know, and and providing the full panoply of locally delivered services, rather than get fobbed off with, you know, a treatment room here, some at there, some at far end of Nethercocks or whatever, yeah.
Way beyond time, the balance, we've had a health centre, we are a growing town, uh, there's a hundred and forty six, something like that going down in Silent Lake, is there, houses? It's it's something like that, you know, it's way beyond time, so I I agree with that.
We're, we're approaching fifteen thousand population, and it's significant.
Yeah. Just have a lot of services to go for.
Approaching, how much, sorry?
Fifteen thousand.
Um, that doesn't need a vote, does it, though?
Um, yeah.
Does it? Okay.
Yeah, it's the council.
Draw, draw an interpose.
Jody, of course.
At cause we disagree with you, and.
Yeah.
We're not.
And I said, and I said, I think that.
Our first.
Thank you very much, dear. Swan someone like suggest when road car park is a better location for a health centre rather than. And wasn't, uh, there wasn't anything else, was there? If I remember correctly. So, item fifteen, um, grant application for Bancroft Mill Engine Museum, uh, consider application for one thousand fifty five pounds to help advertise the museum. Uh, item fifteen, it's, uh, Counselor Whit.
Um, I'll just say it's not a prejudicial to any interest, but I do represent this council on their board of trustees, um, uh, and I've given some advice on this application.
Okay.
Um.
Thank you very much.
Just, just.
Councillor Gaskell.
Um, I'd like to propose that we do give the the amount.
Second it.
That's all of the favour.
Is that a quick award, or is this?
Sure, alright, yeah.
All, yeah.
Gonna say it's a doing that sector.
Item sixteen, correspondence, uh, items for information, I just have one, um, we have a formal complaint. Um, the email, I can read the email, can I?
You just can't, I bet you don't mention to me where they live.
The email reads, to whom I concern, is it Lanx- is it Lanx County Council I complain to about bounds on the square going ahead? Uh, can you provide information or do I ring them directly? I'm certainly going to tend to contest this going ahead as I am sick of the noise, the drugs, the drug taking in the alleyway, litter left on my windows, the banging on my door, scaring, uh, scaring my animals, urinating against the wall, uh, the list goes on. I have put up with long enough, all the square events, noise, I let it pass, but those days and nights, uh, but the whole day and night for the daisies is just unbearable. I would appreciate your response ASAP. That's the complaint, basically, they don't want bounds on the square to go ahead for that reason.
Yeah.
Um, we, uh, we need to pen a response.
We, we. Um, I I don't think we formally to respond here, do we? This is just information on.
Councillor Whit.
Um, Chairman,
Yeah.
uh, a neutral response, um, would be to advise the complainant that, um, uh, the issues that she raises, the issues that are raised, um, uh, should be lodged with the licensing authority.
It, it, yeah, I also, I also think that instances should be reported to the police as well.
Um.
Yeah.
It's proper order, I confess.
Yeah. Chairman, as as the.